A quick leejus delay on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a invisible liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes, any corrections? Motion approved. A motion to approve, there's a second?
Second.
Second, all favors aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Approval bills.
And as you notice, you have an addition on your tape with your guests from the LEC. And I was just visiting with Commissioner Brown and all, and the book charge went from fifteen to twenty-five, and I guess I wasn't quite there about that, so we think you were going to check into this.
Yeah, we think there's a miscommunication there. We were going to raise the outside counties, not the five that are in it and the city, but anybody bringing prisoners in. I thought that's what I understood, we were going from fifteen to twenty-five dollars. You know, because of, you know, they don't have anything vested in the facility. There should be a substantial increase there. So, we did two-hundred-and-sixty bucks this month, so. But we'd have, I'd have to talk to Steve and see exactly what we did do. Mark and me would kind of refresh our memories. I understood that's what we did, you know, because they do get some prisoners from Wellstone or whatever, and they come in. So, that's what I understood, because it was too late to put it into the budget. But I believe we just did it a couple of months ago, right?
That's what, yeah, that's what we'll do. It was just a couple of months ago that we supposedly did.
That's what Steve said.
I don't have a record.
We'll look into that.
Check into it.
Okay.
Okay.
So what kind of a percentage increase is it from last year?
Well, last year, what did I say, seventeen thousand? It's...
Substantial.
Hundred percent.
Well, it was nineteen thousand last year and seventy-three this year? For, in, for January?
Well, the jail bill is sixty-five, one-twenty. The re-entry center is eighteen hundred, and then the shram, it's one-hundred-and-forty-five. So, it's... But that's, this is the first month we're going up to seventy dollars instead of thirty.
So all seventy dollars is double, over double thirty, so do the math, it don't take long to figure out what we're doing, so.
Well, you were talking about the increase up to seventeen, you said you were investing for the RRC placements, right?
Right.
Oh, you mean the fifteen to twenty-five?
Fifteen to twenty-five.
That was the book charge?
Without that, oh...
Book charge.
You're talking it was seventeen thousand dollars last January for the bill.
And I got...
For the county bill.
Yeah, but we just had more, probably more days in addition to the fact that we went from thirty to seventy, because you said we had, what, nine-hundred-and-thirty-one prisoner days in the first place?
Right, this month, it's nine-hundred-and-thirty-one.
So that's a substantial number.
With seventy-eight prisoners, I think we calculated. I have a spreadsheet on it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on that, it's just informational. What's the auditor license one that we had to cut two-hundred and...
That's the game and fish, when we sell game and fish.
Oh, so that's money we've taken in, we're just cutting back when we take it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's kind of what I figured.
Yeah.
There's a bill down there to get out of that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a big one. So, I figured that's what it was, but...
Yep.
Several years ago, the auditor used to be able to keep it, where she was in Elizabeth, when she started three, she forgave that money for the counties, so that's worth noting.
Do we handle all of the take, then, of, or that's just licenses that are bought through our office?
Well, office, online, we have vendors, we...
Or the vendors out in the city, we pull all that money, and then we just pass it to the state.
Right. Yep, and that's just going to go away, I don't think in six, probably in six months.
Yeah, but the bill passed already.
No, it hasn't yet. They're researching it, because they want to know if they need to hire another employee down there, but I think if everything is online, it's going to go a lot smoother for them.
Well, that's how it works, though, right? So, those who go online, they worry about it.
Hey, any other questions? Kevin, can you get any out of yours?
I think there was three, but they were small, they had a green folder. I just found them this morning, but I don't remember. Telephone service on the Edmore Satellite. Engineers Convention Room, some of the homey, and that was like shop.
Well, we got to make that seven shops, because two-hundred dollars.
Couple hundred for that one, and seventy-five for the room, and four for the Edmore Satellite.
Okay, any other questions?
Motion to approve the bill.
A motion to approve the bill, there's a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, sir.
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Lifon?
Aye.
Could that move into the financial reports? Are they all right moving it?
There's just one question here. If you look at your liability report, two-nine-five-zero, which is emergency manager, I am transferring, if you notice, there's a letter of transfer, because we do fifty percent of our budget, so that'll be out of the red. Otherwise, everything is on schedule. Is there any questions on it?
A motion and a second to approve the financial report, roll call.
Yes.
Okay.
Lifon?
Aye.
Eisler?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Brown?
Okay, treasure checks.
Anything unusual there, Betty?
No.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve the treasure checks, there's a second, also. There's a second? Roll call.
Martins?
Aye.
Eisler?
Aye.
Brown, Olson?
Aye.
Lifon?
Aye.
Brown?
A approval of agenda, any changes, any wanted to add?
There is, if you notice, there was a new agenda on your desk.
Okay, visitors and delegations, anybody want to adjust the board or commission? Okay. We've been around, evidently not here. Let's skip to Jerry, go ahead.
Well, monthly, you know, they have an assessing contract, that's part of the township. They lost their assessor, so they asked the contract with the county. So, we just multiply out the number of parcels times a dollar amount per parcel, and that's what we charge them. They do have probably about fifteen properties in Doyen that need measuring, and a few years back, we, if we were going to have to do the work for a township that had their own assessor, we'd charge them fifty dollars per property, if we had to go measure it and list it and put a value on it. But this, they have enough parcels with Doyen and Bartlett and the little towns. The four-hundred-and-sixty dollars is more than we charge most townships, just because Doyen, pretty much Doyen's there. On the other hand, when that elevator comes online, just that alone, if we had to hire somebody to do it, it'd be a couple thousand dollars just to do that elevator. So, they are getting a big break by contracting to the county. But I, I guess I don't have a problem with that.
They're okay with it?
They signed the contract, they asked for it.
Okay. I guess that's who we're trying to serve, is the people, so. Our offices in the courthouse are needed to serve, and so we do. Any other fees we should charge?
Well, I mean, we're without subsidizing all the townships we're doing it, but I, I did a little map just to show you what we're up to now. We picked up three townships for this year, three more. And if legislation goes through the way it's proposed with the assessor certification requirements, I have a feeling we'll have them all. That's a little map I did of the townships that we have contracts with right now are the, the blue shaded ones. The yellow ones are ones that we should have contracts with, because we've been, we've had, we've done more work in those three townships in the last few years than if we'd be doing the work ourselves. So, you can see, we've... I'd say we probably have seventy-five percent of the workload already, just with all the Lakeshore Townships contracting for us, that's the big workload right there.
Can't like Bartlett Township, could they ask Stevens Township's assessor to do it?
Sure, they can contract with whoever they want.
Are they aware of that?
I don't know, the board never even come to talk to me even. I just dealt with the assessor, he actually lost his certification because he didn't attend the schooling like he should have.
You know, where people are very capable, some of these other townships that are doing the assessing for that township, they, they either do, they next one over with the limited properties they have, so.
Yeah. Although, if a township assessor's only doing ag land, just with a small town in Doyen, is quite a bit more than just dealing with ag land.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because there's...
The buildings and stuff.
Yeah. And, and the elevator, you know, that elevator is maybe one of the reasons they decided to go with someone else, I mean, you know...
The old elevator?
Hot?
The old elevator or the new one?
The new one, and the old one.
What, four-hundred, the contract's four-hundred-and-sixty dollars?
Yeah.
I guess I would want a newable town and elevator and everything, four-hundred-and-sixty bucks if I was from another township. If it was my township, I'd do it.
And they'd probably say... They would probably pay somebody a hundred dollars, yeah, you know, if you were...
That's a lot of work for that kind of money, I guess.
In fact, I, I probably, the assessor there probably was getting nothing. And they, they just do it as a part of the board member.
First one to provide the service.
I think that's the other ones.
It looks like that legislation is going to go forward, too, so. We're going to end up with more.
Deal, anything else, Jerry?
No, there, there should be a motion and a second to approve that contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
A motion and a second? Second, second. All favors aye?
Aye.
Aye.
One other thing I have is the Sandpiper Pipeline north of town, quite ways north. I did a, I found a map online of that, too, if you haven't seen one, that's, that's the route of it. And it goes through eight townships. I guess first, who, who should they be dealing with as far as zoning in the county?
You asked me that question, Jerry, when did you find out? Did you ask any other counties?
Yeah, I asked.
Evidently, it's coming out of Downer, right? It's going to go into Nelson County, what did they do?
Should the pipeline company be dealing with in terms of zoning, you're asking?
With Rams, when they, when they want to, what they're, what they did is, when they called me, well, they actually emailed, they said, "Does the county require any special use permits or conditional use permits?"
To place the pipeline?
To, you know, they're just trying to get ahead of the ball.
Yes.
If they're going to go this spring, like, you know, they're being good about it, not coming in the day before they want to start. And I said, "No, you could probably call the county auditor." They said, "We've already talked to the county auditor, she said to call you." We don't have anybody to handle our zoning in the county.
We have a plan to be zoning today.
Well, I went to find out who was on that, too, because I guess I'm on it, but we never meet.
Well, we haven't meet, we haven't been meeting for quite some time, but my feelings are, is that we should be meeting over this other thing, too, so that we're in coordination with the way the city's thinking on, on things, too, you know?
Who's on it for me?
Let's, let's back up here. Did you have called Nelson County, see what they're doing, or Downer County?
I asked Sandpiper. They said Mon Trail requires a conditional use permit, Towner requires a permit, Grand Forks requires a permit.
Yeah, I would think we need a permit, yeah, that's totally logical to me, because they're going across county property, you know, giving permission for that.
Under roads and, you know, they're, they're dissect, you know, right kitty corner across the county. They also, I also told them they should probably contact the township boards, you know, so the townships know what's going on.
That's what I told them.
And they had already contacted the townships, and all the townships said to contact the county. But as far as I can tell, there's five out of the eight townships do their own zoning, so the county has no say.
Good.
But when they contact the townships, they said to contact the county, they probably don't even know that they do their own zoning, because maybe somebody else in the board said about years ago, you know, and I guess my original question is, who should they be talking to at the county level?
They have talked to me, and I told them if it's going through a township, they need to contact the township first, and then bring it to the county commission. And if they dissolve their contract and turn it over to the county, this is what I told Sandpiper, I didn't tell them, "No, we don't handle for use permits," and I tell them where our ordinances are at, because they're on the State Health Department, and she said they read through it, so, and she hasn't called me back since, so. She said one of the townships signed off on it.
One of them, that's down there?
Yep.
Which one?
And I don't remember which one, it's been a while since she called me.
Well, they, they had a special meeting to sign off on it, or...
They usually get together and sign off on it.
Well, they usually have a yearly meeting in March, because I was the comrade committee, you know, right north of my house, actually, on our land. So I was, I assume we're going to talk about it in March when we have our township meeting, that's kind of what I assumed, because I think we're one of the townships that zones ourselves, I believe.
That's one I have a question mark on.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think, I think we're our own, I'm, I'm sure we don't have a standing committee for zoning, I would assume the township board is just the zoning committee.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to have public hearings, I suppose, on all the zoning. So, I don't know how we're going to do that, I was kind of questioning that myself, how we're going to deal with it.
I don't think it would hurt for the county zoning, planning, and zoning commission to have a meeting and invite all the townships.
I, I think that's...
I agree with that.
You know, so everybody's on the same page, right?
We have a standing committee for it, we should utilize it.
Invite all the township officers from the affected townships there, and get back on track here with these things that are going on. I don't know, what happened that you, we maybe lost the chair to that, and nobody picked up the chair boots, so...
The last thing we met on, I think, was that Penn Camp Room.
Yep, that Penn Camp Room.
Which was, what, three years ago, probably, or something?
Yep, go ahead.
The township officers meet on March twenty-fourth, do you think maybe we should get on their agenda and bring it forth to all the townships, or is that too late?
I'd like to see a five-year zoning meeting before that.
When are they going to do this project, and when do they want, do you have a date they're going to start here?
No, I think it's all on the internet, though, they have a website, a nice website with information, and that's where I got that map.
I don't believe it's for a little over a year, year and a half, it's a while out, it's not soon.
They're, they're having a lot of trouble in Minnesota.
Yeah, they're waiting on Minnesota at this point. But they're, they're stuck in fight.
Yeah, they're prepared, so that...
Yeah, we should move forward, I guess. Get the affected townships together with the planning and zoning for Rams County, and set up some type of meeting, so, or way, we can get on the same page.
Yeah.
See, I think maybe you should put that on the township officers meeting for the, that is, because that, that gets everybody there. It should be on the agenda for that, I guess.
Yep, I will talk to Dennis Miller and Anne Bricky.
We want through North Township, no, Adam?
No, it's going to be south there, comes through, yeah, north, comes the northeast Morris, and then the south part of Newton, and then it drops down, and yeah, it puts a next one there.
I think Dennis would be a good one to help.
Yeah, this is up in Kato, I believe.
Well, you have the president of the township officers, right?
Yeah, he'd be good to talk to about it, give him the form, so he knows what's going on.
We should have a meeting with the townships.
Well, yeah, just so we can all kind of get on the same page, I think is kind of what we need to do, so we know where we're going.
We'll keep that in mind.
So everyone's at least informed of what their decision-making process should be, who has their own rights to zoneware or whatnot.
And we want Elizabeth to look into that for us.
I'll work with Elizabeth on getting, finding a zoning committee together as well. See if we can get that meeting before the township offices meeting, so that everybody's thinking, saying, "Oh, we're here, on there."
I think there's seven, I think.
Who was the chairman?
It was Joe, but we haven't looked at a nuance, so we need to organize into that.
Yeah, we've never met since I've been on it.
Right.
Weren't you on, when we met for the Penn thing, Penn zoning for that camp room?
What's that?
Were you on the commission when we met for the Penn rezoning for the camp room?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay.
So these other county, I just wanted to add one thing. The other counties that require a special permit from a planning and zoning committee, obviously that's separate from, you know, any counties or areas that deal with flood point issues, being that the pipeline goes underground, and it's going to be underneath your base flood elevation, that's not something that I would be able to permit out. They haven't contacted me as far as permitting anything, because I, I wouldn't be able to, it would be under, under everything, I wouldn't be able to give that okay unless...
Right.
The board. And I guess that's what a planning and zoning committee would fall.
We should also contact Towner and Nelson County, so the counties get on the same page.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Who in the state would lead a cell in right over here? Emergency manager, or...
Well, the service.
Well, the service commission would be deciding, I would assume. The guy would be the dashboard commission, one of those two best pipeline oversaves, every time we get a pipeline.
Yep, they might just tell us where I'm going.
I would assume it's the PNC, it's interesting.
I think they'd be happy to send somebody just to recommend or to give a little bit of advice as to how everything else has come in the past, so.
Just informational.
Informational, yeah.
Somebody should really go through our comprehensive plan and see if pipelines are allowed, you know, if they're allowed or not.
What you got down there?
I'm assuming so, because we've already got the water, ran across the county years, but that could have been a special permit, possibly.
Yeah, that runs right on their railroad, right?
Well, I don't, some runs across that Hager property, I've more...
That one that jumps out of the drawl there, you know, down there?
Yeah, it's a good reading on.
It's definitely a good living.
Right, good. This gal did tell me that, I asked her maybe for, I said, "Maybe you could give us a map and what these," they talk about above-ground apparatuses, which is pipes and, I don't, you know, who knows what that is? So she's, she's trying to get those from here, to get them to us.
What factors are those around you?
Right there.
Above-ground apparatuses, you said?
Appurtenances of all?
Appertnances. Is that big valve one of them?
Where they come over, it's like a...
That big valve, isn't that, wouldn't that be considered one of those?
Like the one, like the pension?
North of the highway, yeah, like the MDU pipeline.
There's one of those, uh...
I can't, it's a legend up there, but is there anything in that legend that says above-ground?
No.
Anyway, that's something that she's going to get to us as soon as she can.
We definitely want to have something together for the March twenty-fourth township meeting, because they'll be looking at us, what we're doing, and we're going to be looking at the ceiling, so we want to have our oars in the lock by then, so.
Yep. Maybe you keep me in on that, too, for permitting on our roads.
Yeah.
Road railroads.
Well, and I think that the planning and zoning commission can step, so when they issue that permit, they can put whatever they want in that conditional use permit as far as requirements, you know, so if you have some specific requirements when you're crossing roads or something, that would be a good thing to be brought up, but that means...
He would definitely be invited to that planning and zoning, yeah.
Well, and crossing some waterways, so.
Right. Okay, any else down there with some work to get done? Okay, without, we move into Stacy?
I have one more thing, if I can, oh, Jerry, go ahead. With all the legislation going on in Bismarck, all the twenty-six bills I'm tracking right now, but there's one that concerns me, and it has to do with the ag land, the way we've been doing, modifying our ag land to trees. You know, that was one of the biggest complaints when we first started implementing this, besides the water, was the tree ground. A lot of the big old oak and ash groves, the reason they're big old groves is because they're on the best soil in the county, so the trees got big. House Bill ten fifty-four right now says that non-productive, our non-productive category does not include trees. And I talked to the legislator that's, that's pushing it, and he just feels if it's good soil, it should be taxed, it should be valued at the soil type and not look at it because it's covered with trees. And I don't, I don't, that's not...
Who's the ledge there?
Representative Schmidt from South Ray, South of Mandan, he's a farmer.
That doesn't have any trees.
Yeah. Yeah, he says he does, I talked to him about it, but that would be one thing that we'd really catch some flack on if we raised, because originally we did, we just do it by soil type and sent out the notices, and that's one of the things we heard back, you realize that whole eighty is covered with trees, or, you know, around Sweetwater, or... So we lowered, then we decided to lower the value on the trees, you know, the big groves of trees in the county.
And the state was all right with that?
Yeah.
I think we should stand firm on that one.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's...
Does Schmidt wants to just, everything's taxed, you know?
Well, he, he doesn't think it should be modified just because it has trees on it.
That was one of the original modifiers when we first started hearing about this program. Evidently, he wasn't here in the thirties, I wasn't either, but the stories I heard weren't pretty.
Well, and what I asked him, you know, why he was concerned with that, and he said because he's seen people harvest trees and how much they can sell it for. And I said, "Well, that's probably one case in North Dakota, it's not like we're a logging state," you know, so...
I don't think that bill will get any traction at all.
Yeah, it's, it already went through the House.
How's that... What number is that bill?
Was that your cultural?
Ten fifty-four, you know, the Finance and Taxation Committee recommended approving it in the House.
Got it to floor, it hasn't been passed on the floor yet.
It hasn't been passed on the floor.
Hasn't passed on a what?
Off the floor.
It came out of committee with a due pass, though?
Yep.
Really?
There's no...
Interesting.
It hasn't, it hasn't gone to the floor or...
Yeah, it's just in the conference.
Yeah.
Who's the chairman, you don't, did you know?
What was it, ten fifty-four, oh, back there, sorry.
Chairman of Finance and Taxation.
Taxation Committee.
Should be Cook.
Oh, he's a senator, he's a senator.
No, yeah.
You want to know who's on the finance committee?
Who's the chairman?
Um, finance. I'm not finding it. Is anyone else faster?
The chairman of the finance committee?
On the outside.
That's a reading.
It's Representative Craig Headland, out of District twenty-nine.
I should know that.
He's the...
And this bill was prepared for him. It was a hog house, they took another bill and threw the whole thing out and put this bill in there.
Well, I'll have to look into...
You know, the other thing in that bill that, that I know we've talked about is the inundated land classification will go away with this, if this bill gets passed, it's written, and it'll just be modifiers, and I, I think that's better that way, so we can all, we only have to deal with one set of rules. The one thing, though, that's in there is, is it's written as WRP right now could get a tax break for twenty-nine years. But CRP can't, or any, any annual payment disqualifies them. Being WRP is a one-time payment for thirty-year, a thirty-year easement, it only disqualifies them for the year that they, the year after they get the payment, and then twenty-nine years of tax reduction.
We talked about this before.
Right, and I, I...
The bill will do what, stay the same, then just tax it to one year?
Right. So that, you know, that's another thing, I've made Terry Trainer aware of that with Association of Counties, so he can, and they're aware of it, but I don't, they didn't get into this bill.
Did you talk to Trainer about ten fifty-four?
Yeah. I was on a committee, the, the state tax commissioner asked me to be on a committee, we helped draft this bill. But as with all committees, not everything gets in the bill, and that was one thing that didn't get in there.
Craig Headland is the head of phone wars for the Hall.
Yeah, we got that. Yeah, we got that.
Anyway, I just thought it'd be nice for.
Before we discussed in legislative session on Friday last week and, no, that was 1354, I'm sorry. And they said that that was probably a lead and they couldn't pass it.
Okay, any other questions, jury, any other?
That's all.
No other questions from the commission? Yeah, we better stay on that 1054. That W R P one, I don't know. What's the feeling you get on that one?
What's my feeling?
I mean, what feeling you get from your correspondence on that computer?
Well, it seems like nobody else is concerned with it. But I don't know how popular W R P is in other counties. It is here.
Another thing on the Ramsey County, all the trees we've lost because of the lake. I'm sure you can see trees that are still out of the water.
Well, and I'm sure that was part of, when we, when we redid it by soil type, the tree ground was lowered by somebody years and years ago.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not new thinking to leave the tree land value lower. You know, it's, don't want to encourage them to tear the trees out, I guess.
No, and the state has a precedent statement, they have a forestry program where they lower the value or lower the taxes on trees just for growing trees, so I mean.
Well, and that could be why they're, that's maybe one of the reasons that if this passes this way, people can sign it up, but then that's a contract and a lot of farmers don't like these contracts.
Yeah.
Because we don't have hardly any signed up for that forest stewardship program.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, thank you. Stacy?
Yeah, good morning. January turned out to be another busy month we picked up from last fall. 68 veterans, people came in looking for benefits and whatnot. Tended two meetings, a Military Affairs Committee meeting, and then I spoke at the Supportive Services for Veteran Family Gathering. I thought I was only speaking to the eastern part of the state, well, it was the whole state, which ended up being nine women. And that ended up being one of my longest speaking engagements as far as a million and one questions.
Really?
A lot of confusion from that organization as to how veteran services and things for families should operate. They did ask for an opportunity to have training from the state level regarding veterans issues. And I said I'd work with the North Dakota Veterans and see what we could do. It would end up being a separate training than what we get because it'd be more geared to their situations that they get involved in. But there's a lot of confusion. The biggest one being that somewhere along the line, the Supportive Services, they assume that every veteran service officer has a drawer full of money that they can give out to someone who comes in and asks for money for gas. Gas is usually what they're asking for. They want $40 to fill their car with gas so they go to the doctor. Well, and never in those cases, never is for gas. In most cases, it's to do something else with. There, it's been, it's basically an unwritten rule that as service officers, we don't have the money, we don't, we're not fiduciaries, we don't, we don't have a drawer of cash. What it boiled down to was they were misunderstanding the post-war trust fund, which is available through application processes for veterans to get emergency monies, loans, and that kind of thing. So we got them straightened out in that situation. But what it did do is for the next week and a half after that, I was getting phone calls with more and more questions. So right now, I'm the go-to guy for Supportive Services questions. But it did give the opportunity, each time I got a question I didn't have an answer for, I called Fargo and it shows me that they do need the training. The, and like I said, that was a two-hour meeting for me and they met for two days themselves, but I was going in thinking 15, 20 minutes and once the questions started coming, it was all over the place. So that's all I got.
So you've been busy.
Oh, yeah, it's not, not letting up. We're still fighting veterans who have never, ever applied for benefits. And that to me is, we're seeing more and more of the Vietnam era guys come in now with serious health problems. And it's almost like you flip the switch and the issues are just piling up on them. And even in Nelson now, I'm getting busier because of that. A lot of it has to do with the clinic. I'm seeing a lot of people from not just the local counties, but from far-reaching outlying areas. They want to go to this clinic and if they're not eligible, they come to me to get eligible. So we're busy that way also.
The clinic's going long-term time?
Fantastic, it's busy. There, I did have to, I made a coffee time radio spot here a few weeks ago and I ended up calling Fargo. The clinic wanted me to get permission to, as to talking points, so I called Fargo. And back in the first, second week of January, they had 249 registered patients that strictly use this only. And then that's where we find out the ones that aren't eligible to go to that clinic, they come in and I'm seeing that half a dozen more every week to get added to that. They're coming in. So that's where we're staying busy. The clinic stays busy and that makes me busy.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Any questions, commission? Very good, Stacy, thank you. Ron, did you want to be up next or do you want to watch more of the meeting?
It's up to you, sorry about.
It's up to you.
Well, Bill, I don't know, Bill, do you want to go first?
Bill can go first.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bill.
Well, Kristen's ahead of me.
Oh, I'm.
Sale day, so I'm going to catch you through here.
Okay. I love it. Morning commissioners. Just to say thanks for the use of buildings around us. We had another very, very successful two-day event. The first morning was probably the biggest morning we ever had. The afternoon was probably one of the lightest days, afternoons we've had. But when it gets a week cold out, the guys go out for dinner and they get a toddy and they forget to come back. So that's kind of usually happens then. But it was very well attended. We had rooms quite full. Of course, it was our 35th roundup year anniversary and it was also extension as we knew it was 100 year anniversary for us, so we had a really good celebration for that. Farm bills also in the works right now. We've got to get that going for everybody. I've been working on farm bills. Some are quite interested in how some of their farms are eligible for reallocation and some are not, which is kind of an interesting thing. I wrote a little list here. We are getting a new district director. My boss has since retired and moved on to another position with an extension. So sometime in the next two to three months, we'll be having a new district director for our district up here. Two last things, pizza day is soon coming. Brenda takes care of that. That's for the kids when they're on the area, you get to come and see how the ingredients of a pizza's made. If you've never been there, please attend. It's one day for the kids. We all learn something from that. And of course, lastly is the markets. I've been getting a lot, a lot of phone calls, a lot of phone calls on cash rents, how we're going to get ends to meet this year. I've talked to two financial lenders in a community and they haven't done a positive cash flow yet. I don't know what that exactly means for our future because so many things come into play with that. Primarily, you know, if we happen to get a bad growing season in a different part of the world, that can affect what happens here tremendously. But with our current commodity prices, it's, right now, it's looking on the negative side for most crops. Cattle market is coming down, as I told Ron. When you have per-head prices four, five, $600 higher than they've ever been, including last year, how can you still be negative about it? You know, they've come down a lot because Commissioner Brown went in the last month by even sold, they're still worth a lot of money.
They really fluctuate. Just turned on radio this morning, here cattle are up $12 to $15 in instances of $20 a hundred. So that's a big fluctuation as far as knowing when to sell, where to go, and what to do.
Yeah.
A lot of thought. I'd like to thank you very much for the roundup bill. You've done a marvelous job over the years.
Already working on next year. We've got our dates set, fifth and sixth, so you can put that in calendars. We've been getting a lot of pressure to move this to other places to include the college. And right now, I just can't see us moving it for lots of reasons, primarily just logistic things. But we've been approached by different groups to have this happen. The only thing one's a little piece of the pie and it's been a really good event. A lot of work for a couple of days and then I ended up sick afterwards, so I was actually out of the office for about 10 days at home in bed with a very bad bronchitis strain. That just kicked me bad. I've never been beat up like that, but oh, well.
Anything we can do as a commission to help the roundup?
Just be in some kind of less used facilities.
Anything else? We would sure be disappointed, I guess, if you moved it anywhere else. I think the county has worked out real well with all the building space you have and different models.
Yeah.
And it works out very well.
No, we've been blessed, you know. And of course, I have asked Roger for a couple of things. We've gotten new headphone sets for the gym room and the armory room, so you can put them on and walk around and talk. It just, there's been a really lot of nice additions over there. We are, the pesticide program at Fargo is looking at updating the Ivan system over there. Now, I have not heard in the last two, three weeks what's up with that, but I know that they're concerned that that's being such an old system. And they put that in last time, like Elizabeth said, you know, now they're looking at doing something like that.
Okay, keep us informed there.
Will do.
Adam, did you get to the roundup or something?
Yeah.
Bring the folks to town.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. By the way, we have here from Morehead, Bismarck, and Stanley this year.
Really?
Yeah. Goodness, both welcome, thank you.
Good, thank you. Let's do Kristen too first before we do Ron.
Sure. Good morning. Just a few things. I did submit our nine quarterly reports for all my open grants and I'm waiting for actually my 50% E N P G reimbursement and it comes in by deposit, so that will help with that account that we discussed earlier. About a week and a half ago, I did host our quarterly Northeast Regional Meeting where all of the emergency managers in our area get together, talk about issues that we've had. We usually have a couple of people from the state come up and discuss different things that are going on, our different projects that are going on, and that went really well. Also, I completed the bi-annual inspections of the A E Bs that we purchased for the courthouse and the county shop. And everything is sitting well with them. Actually, the pads and the batteries don't expire until 2017, so we're good for a while there. If a grant were to come up in the meantime, I would take opportunity of that to order additional supplies versus having it come out of our pockets 100% from the county level, which I know is what we did last time, but it was a necessary deal. A couple of trainings and exercises are coming up. One to public health on Ebola, actually. It's a video conference with the North Dakota Department of Health, so I'll participate in that and that's just right here in the courthouse. And another one I usually go to is up in Mountain, North Dakota. Phil Soffwell, he's a, I'm looking, and, oh, I can't think of his title. Anyway, he puts on a really good exercise every year. It's a full tabletop. A bunch of agencies come from the Northeast Region come together. It's a bit of a drive up to a little town with not much there, but a giant community center, but it's a good exercise. So I'd be like to participate in that if that's all right with the county.
Where is that at?
In Mountain. Up by Cavalier. So like I said, I usually go to that one annually and it's a good exercise and then it counts towards my exercise credits for my grant, my E N P G grant. And then one last thing, we did have our kickoff meeting for our multi-hazard mitigation plan. Bill, thank you for coming. Sorry that I missed the rest of you. Betty, yes, you were there too. We will be having another one probably within a month. I will get that information sent out, so if you're able to attend, wonderful. The more participation the better. It does count towards our in-kind match, so no dollars have to come out of our pocket. So the more bodies, the better that bodes for us. So keep that in mind. Other than that, things are going well with the contractor on that plan. Things are working and.
When was that, last Thursday?
It was last.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Yes, that's right. Yes, so it went well. The meeting did, we only had seven people there. I think there wasn't a huge turnout, six, seven, eight, maybe, but it was a good meeting and the contractor is really good to work with, so I have a feeling it's going to go really well. So I'm happy with that. That's all I have, unless you have some more questions.
There was something new that came up in this new hazard mitigation plan that's going to keep a door open just in case the refinery does come up.
We'll be able to.
It would be able to add any hazard mitigation that goes on in that.
We'll be able to make changes.
That was a good thing that we, with about that, that moves.
Yeah.
How long does the hazard mitigation plan?
It's good.
Does it have to stand for?
Five years. And it's required by PMA that we submit one per county if we want to be eligible for hazard mitigation grant dollars if some kind of an emergency or disaster were to happen in our area.
Yeah, so we would have to amend it accordingly if the oil.
Correct. And we would be able to, according to our contractor, that'll be worked in as a stipulation into the plan.
We got to start, we got to go.
That was a very, I'm glad you brought that up. I had it on a to-do list, but that's always 14 miles long, so I'm glad that you brought it up, Bill.
But that's to the refinery now.
Yeah, or any other new comings or something were to happen within the next five years span.
Pipelines or anything?
Anything.
Have you?
No, they must be included.
You any contact with Fordals Lake about the refinery system?
Not one call.
Not one call? I wondered if we should bring forward it and let them address the commission. Let's find out where we're at.
I haven't, I've been waiting to hear.
Situation.
Well, I guess I could probably give you something of an update.
Well, let's bring that people in, we need to, you know, the dollars right away from that.
Yeah, if you'd rather hear it from the chair, from Rachel, that would be great.
Otherwise, that's.
But the city did pass zoning and annexation last night, so now the permitting process will begin.
I'm curious to know, I haven't heard anything other than from community members out in the public, you know, saying, you know, asking random questions and I don't have any answers to them because I haven't heard anything. I mean, more than what is.
We need to address those questions, you know, and have finance managers.
That would be great.
And.
I would like.
Well, and I know.
Keep everybody impressed within the county also. I mean, we need to be focused on what needs to be done here and.
I would like to be more informed, so I'd have answers to give anybody that asks.
We've never really been addressed about it at all by the commission.
And I'd have any of it individually.
That make sense to the commission or?
Would you like to run the next, the 17? Okay, I'll come to the contractor.
I think it's kind of addressed the whole time since it's extraterritorial in the city that they just kind of, but that would, I'd like to be, yeah, I'd like to be addressed to others or a personal situation.
I'm sure you'd have questions.
Oh, yeah.
We all do. So I think it'd be a good idea to have her come in and explain how things are going and where we're headed and I hate reading the paper.
That's where I get my news, I guess.
Elected officials should be addressed, you know, as elected officials, not stepped over.
Agreed.
Okay. Anything else?
Not unless you have something for me.
No. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Good, let's try Rhonda now. You must be ready now.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Nah, it's still proud of you, no way.
I just wanted to update you on a couple of bills. There's lots that our organization, the county directors are tracking, but House Bill 1350 was put together, and I sent an email out, and I think I snail mailed you Chairman Brown about House Bill 1350. Judge Bowdy did a lot of work on gathering needs and having meetings and getting people, excuse me, interested in this. And Hofstad, excuse me, Representative Hofstad did a great job introducing 1350. It's a bill for about $750,000, and it illustrated the need for an assessment center or some sort of residential center in our community. The details aren't hammered out, but the money, the appropriation would be given to our area by the Department of Human Services, and they would put out a request for proposals, an RFP. So we're really hopeful about that. They haven't taken any action in the House Senate, or excuse me, House Human Service Committee. They were very interested, the most interest I've seen in a long time. Of course, we have a lot of really, I was gonna say disgusting, but we have a lot of interesting, disgusting statistics regarding poverty of children, rates of suicide, rates of addiction, and no services available in this community for children about 100 miles away is the nearest addiction treatment facility or psychiatric facility. So I brought that, and along with that, I just wanted to give you, because it's pretty confusing, and I will provide a copy of that bill and any testimony. If you want to just email me or talk to me, I can forward that. But this is kind of a cheat sheet of how kids go through the system, how social services in the juvenile court gets them involved, and that'll kind of help you understand. About 50% of our kids are in poverty or at the poverty level. They receive free and reduced meals at all the schools.
Fifty?
Fifty percent.
What's the state, 15 or 20?
Twenty-seven, six. I don't know that because it's been about two years since I've looked at that, but DPI has some good stats on that on their website.
Yeah, it's in the paper here, though.
Yeah, I also have a, and I emailed this out to social service, social service board members, but I also have stats on poverty in North Dakota children. Kids in Benson County, actually, the poverty rate went up for them, so this is pretty interesting, I think, as far as, I think I have enough for everybody. So that's just my propaganda on that, but Judge Bowdy did a great job on that. Of course, with the climate for reducing spending because of oil prices, we're not real sure. It hasn't even gotten out of the House Human Service Committee, so we'll see. Lots of good questions.
This is 1350, you said, so?
Yeah.
So...
It's its own appropriation, aside from that whole big bill of $6 million for assessment centers, because of course, Devil's Lake wasn't even mentioned in that, like the target.
Is this a study for the assessment center, or actually putting in an assessment center?
Actual money for an assessment center. Probably not bricks and mortar, but an RFP to get someone to come in and...
Yeah, some kind of a rent-and-office type tool to develop.
Probably a couple beds, four to six, eight beds, staff. For instance, yesterday, we had a child who would have fit nicely into that. What happens is, we don't, we don't know these children, we get them, there is all kinds of mental health issues, so we end up driving 100 miles to place them in the nearest emergency bed that's appropriate, and then we don't assess them to find out where they'll fit, so we'll move them to a foster home in three days or two days, depending on when that happens. And we don't, they won't fit into the foster home because we didn't realize they have XYZ issues relating to, well, anything as far as they're not nice to small children that the foster family has enough, you know, and we may be able to assess that, and it may be something as large as an undiagnosed addiction issue where they're, you know, we just didn't know those things. Or if we had 30 days or even five days sometimes, we could make a better placement. And I know the social service board members know this, that our social workers drive, 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 and most of it is failed placements or picking up kids and moving them. We have kids out of state. I think we have three right now, four right now, and we're looking at placing a fifth, so. And those out-of-state placements are for kids with very high needs, and they're very expensive. The next bill is House, excuse me, Senate Bill 2206, and that is a bill that has not passed out of committee either. Well, actually, I don't know if, it didn't pass out of the Senate Human Service Committee, but it was sent over to taxation. I think I probably have an email that I haven't sent to you, Adam, about that. They're meeting tomorrow, taxation appropriation, at 8:30, or excuse me, appropriation committee is meeting at 8:30 tomorrow, so that'll be interesting. That takes over all grant costs, and I have, I know Betty didn't get to vet this yet. Some other auditors across the state had some issues with this, and this is an 18-month thing that Terry Trainer put together through an email. I just printed it this morning, so I can't tell. Yeah, I noticed, if you look at the top of this, he, family preservation services are included in that. And when Kristy Chickis, our financial person, put together numbers, we came up with about $574,000 in a fiscal year. That's taking into that those family preservation. And I haven't talked to Terry in a while, and I'm doing that. I don't know why, when you look at the top of the, he did not include those. And family preservation is listed separately in the bill. Family preservation sped EBT, TechSWAN, and TechSWAN is that computer system that we pay every month to use to validate and look at people's income for economic assistance programs. EBT is the old, is the old food stamps, we call it SNAP, supplemental nutrition. That's a computer system. The cards and the card system, we issue the cards out of our office. Child welfare, that's the foster care and sub-adopt. That's a huge cost to us. The other category that's listed in the bill that Terry does not have on here is our wraparound services, and that's the in-home case management. We have two and a half positions, and the state is already paying 80% of two of those positions. We're getting back on a grant, so actually, three and a half positions. So I'm not sure about these numbers. And again, this is just a guesstimate by Terry Trainer to give something to look at, but he did leave out a whole category that's listed in the bill. So that was, I guess that's all I have. We're really hopeful about that. Again, kind of our points about that from a social service board perspective are local services for people and tax relief, property tax relief in the form of the state paying for those mandated services. We really don't have a lot of control over foster care. We don't have a lot of control over sub-adopt payments to folks. In fact, well, sub-adoption and foster care are services that are much needed, but we don't have a lot of control over them. Although I say that, and theoretically, with wraparound family preservation services, you should reduce your foster care, so we are working on that, and our numbers have gotten lower with, we've added, you know, a worker in the wraparound, Hannah Riddeman is a new staff that we have working with families to keep kids out of foster care. So she's, she's actually excellent, but theoretically, that's not always how it works. So with that, I'll give you an organizational chart, because I know we've changed a lot in our agency, and this is going to be changing again most probably, but I can give you who we all have in our agency, so you can take a look at that. I know, sorry about that, really, I didn't see if you could reach there, so. So that's just for your information. And then the last thing I'll be really quick is, I wanted to hand out the, we've been asking for this, the county directors for, well, they didn't provide one last year. So this year, we got one. This is the providers and the money that the providers have billed the Medicaid system in our county. I gotta put my glasses on because it's pretty small, but it's pretty interesting. In Ramsey County, we have 121 Medicaid providers. Those are folks who can bill Medicaid. They've done the paperwork. Actually, our agency is one of them for our direct care associates. Eighteen million, 462,813 dollars have, has been rolled back into our community through billing Medicaid. So it's a huge economic, I don't know if you'd call it a boost, but it's economically, Medicaid is rolling in a lot of dollars into our community with our hospitals, our providers.
So in a nutshell, Rhonda, that eighteen million, it's actually, like you say, rolled back into the economy.
Right.
And it's bills that would have been outstanding more than likely, right?
Well, it'd be like, if someone on Medicaid is in the nursing home, it's the $5,000 that Medicaid is paying, which pays the nurses and the nurses aides and keeps the building going. It's the clinic billing for Medicaid folks going to the clinic, it's the hospital billing for Medicaid folks. We have the Human Service Center here who bills for mental health issues, and we have several private providers now actually in town. So, yeah, we, it is a, you know, it's money flowing back into the community. Of course, remember, North Dakota's in some economic prosperity, so the FMAP...
They're putting that way wildly, but go that way, hurry.
I know. We used to be at 80%, the FMAP, that is the federal matching for Medicaid. We're at 50%, the lowest you can go. So the state of North Dakota pays half of Medicaid back. They don't get fully reimbursed. So for instance, the state of Mississippi only pays 20% of their Medicaid bill because of their economics. We pay half, and that's, that's gone steadily down to as low as it can go in the last years because of the economic growth with the oil.
Our county got 1.7.
Yeah, and I thought that was kind of low, especially since they have a nursing home there, so. I'm not sure...
You've been in Bismarck lately, right, Rhonda?
Couple times, yes.
Yeah, I was there last Thursday.
Oh.
And you don't have to walk the halls very long to get the script, but there will be some slashes out of the governor's budget and...
Yeah.
I think it's going to actually come quite quickly, I wish. Surge money, I don't know.
The Senate Human Service Committee, Judy Lee, announced she had a meeting with the governor surrounding Senate Bill 2206. She actually said that out loud, so a few people staked it out, and we don't know what the meeting was. We're hopeful that it was, this needs to go for property tax relief. And when I listened to Senator Wardner on Perip Public, Betty and I talked about it. He talked about there's going to be some changes in budgets because of the oil situation, but we still need to focus on, he put it back on you. It's a local issue, but the legislature gets stuck dealing with it, but we need to focus on property tax relief. So I'm hopeful that this is one thing that they keep as property tax relief, but we'll see. He talked about in reference to income tax. He's not a big fan of lowering our income tax for the state of North Dakota anymore, so that's all I have, and I'll quit, yeah.
I think that's the income tax, but it's the item, I think. And Representative Johnson told me during the meeting last week, they have eight billion on the table that they could spend, because they started up, and they took four billion away, and that's there no longer. You got four billion left to work on.
So revise budget of everybody for last month.
Yeah, there, they're just, you know, you could feel it to any one of them, I mean, things have tightened up, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of people there yesterday, too. I wasn't there yesterday. I would like to go tomorrow, but I have a commitment tonight with the plane situation in the East Coast. I have to pick a kid up that, I don't know if he's gonna get here today or not, but I would have gone down for that 8:30 hearing tomorrow, but I just can't make it. But there's gonna be quite a few county directors, and I'm hopeful that someone from here could go. I think commissioners make an impact. There was two commissioners that testified for 2206 in the, excuse me, the Senate Human Service Committee, and they did a very, very nice job. Dale Stridden from Wharton County and Suket from Wells County.
Randy.
Randy, yeah. He did a really nice job. Of course, I tended to like Randy's better. He talked about how we believe that the county, we need to help our neighbor in need, but this has gotten to the point where it's past what we can do as a county with our property tax. Mr. Stridden focused on, they've had to kick a paying customer out of the courthouse to expand social services. Again, Wharton County is similar to us, they've had to add staff and don't have a lot of room. So Custer County Department of Health is a paying renter in their courthouse, and they've had to move them out. And so they've lost revenue that way, plus paying for more staff positions. So he did a very nice job, too. He focused more on the economics of it, which is real also, so he did a nice job. So that's all I had. I'm sorry that I didn't make the, I had a...
Oh, worry about it.
Taxi was going this morning.
Rhonda, just one quick question.
Sure.
On this Department of Human Services thing that Terry Trainer put together, you said you didn't have the family preservation and what else?
Just family preservation, which includes the parent aide and wraparound, we call it wraparound case management, which is a worker that goes into the home and addresses pretty serious concerns. She can go there once a day. We have had families that she's been involved with a couple of times a week. It's actually Marla, Gerald, and Hannah Riddeman, and then we have a half-time supervisor paying this Kristy Hoistad. And the schools are liking us a little better. We've been able to do some, when they're identifying families that they see at risk, we're able to do some intervention. The nature of the beast for social services is, we are to the bone. We get involved, and Lonnie knows this too, we get involved when it gets to the point where there's nothing else left to do. The school's tried everything, the other community services have tried everything. So we're trying to get in there a little earlier, so hopefully, we're making some impact. It makes for better relationships, especially with the school, because of course, teachers and administrators, principals see those kids every day, and they know. It makes for a little better relationship with some of the medical providers, too, because they also see a need that we're just not able to address because we didn't, we just didn't have the staff. We would assess it, we had assessment workers, but we just didn't have the staff to provide services, so.
I'm just looking at it because you sent me those numbers of when you were going up to, when it was originally heard, and he's got 594 for the biennial, and that's actually fairly accurate if you don't use our family preservation. But our family preservation this for 2014 was $170,000.
Yeah.
So that's, that's 340 for the biennial for us. So I mean, we're looking at, it was 470 for the, 476 total for the 2014 fiscal years, and we're looking at $940,000.
Well, and, you know, the county thing isn't my first, but just to point out that I sent you a 12-month, and I think he's, and I wonder if that's a typo. He says 18, he's talking about 18 months on there at the top. At the top, yeah.
Could you have the expenditures, and then he's got calendar year 2016, yeah?
Yeah. Oh, he does have calendar years, 2016. I was confused by it, and I haven't...
I don't know why it's 18, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Terry at all about it, so.
He hasn't written as though it'll take effect until January of 2016 instead of June of 2015.
Does the 18-month have something to do with the budget period process, or when they plan on starting takeover of some of the services, or?
Well, maybe they don't plan on taking any of them until January 16 instead of June 15.
That would fit our budget side.
Yeah.
So it'll align on our budget side, probably.
Fit the county's budget side.
So we don't get 18 months instead of just the 24.
And then I just wanted to also add in, we averaged 55 kids in foster care in 2014, and 83 out of 314 children born at Mercy Hospital in 2014 were born with illegal substances in their system and reported to our agency for, I think that's about 26%. As I said, numbers aren't my deal, but I do know it's 83 out of 314, which is unbelievable. And there were bills heard yesterday, and I regret that Scott Davis from the Indian Affairs Commission called me about those numbers. I haven't, I emailed him twice yesterday, and I'm sure he's very busy. I hope he got those numbers to the committee, because I think it's huge for our community. It speaks to our drug issues with parents and families, drug and alcohol, issues with families. And again, there's no test for alcohol. A couple of those delivering mothers were actually physically intoxicated, but usually it was illegal substances found in the urine or the blood test, so. With, I think, three deaths and 10 or 12 that were flown or transported via ambulance for detox in Fargo or Grand Forks, depending on the neonatal intensive care unit that had room and could take them, so we have a huge issue.
Rhonda, I'd like to thank you for the time you spend going to Bismarck and being around the legislative body down there. I know it's trying at times, and sometimes you feel like you're, you know, what the hell am I doing here, you know?
Hitting your head a little bit.
Is there any way we can keep you down there more?
We have a really good reputation.
Not that we want to get really up here, but I can realize what you're doing. I mean, I really do, honestly, truly.
I appreciate that, and there's a lot of talking. I feel really good about, the North Dakota Association of Counties has recognized the social service directors in the last couple of years, and I think, and Terry's always did a good job, but we've actually had a voting place at the association. And I think that we have a really good, we have Steve Reiser, who's a colleague of Jerry's on the board for the Association of Counties. He does a great job. I am gonna be taking, as you know, you stole Tom Rimey away from Benson County, so I'm gonna take his place. We're all, we each take a week or the first three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So I will be down there more, we're taking more. I'm taking his days because he's gonna be starting at the law enforcement center, I think, March 2nd. So I appreciate that. We, a lot of conversation, a lot of emails. I know that Head Start bill, I provided some input for the testimony, and we were thanked for that from Allison Diving from Head Start. That's a great partner for us, and I think it's a really, something that people are missing out on as far as a federal program that our state has not been willing to pick up their share of because it's a federal program, and they just don't want to see grant programs go away, and then we're stuck holding it. But if we're gonna lower, you know, the DOCR, the Department of Corrections, wants us to stop sending so many people to the state penitentiary, well, then we need to look at what are we doing on the front end to stop that from happening. That's the early Head Start. Kids that are in early Head Start are not incarcerated at the same rate as other children. They read better, they finish high school, they have lower addiction. They read better, they finish high school, they're, they have lower addiction rates, I mean, there's just a lot of things we can do. And I, I know that um, that was a huge issue, all the sheriffs lined up to um, argue about that was interesting and a lot of the sheriffs got it. And I know that, I didn't get a chance to talk to Steve, but for our area, if we're gonna keep people out of the pen, we need to have some sort of services here and Lonnie can speak to this. We don't have addiction services for them to go to, so we actually send people to the penitentiary to get needed addiction services. That's probably not where they belong and it's a very expensive way to treat an addiction, because usually their crime is secondary to an addiction, but I, I'll put preaching, but anyway. I think that there's some merit there, I don't know how they'll do that. The other thing is um, the disparity in, um, yeah, Ramsey County sends a lot of people to the pen. Well, if you look at where we're located, our population rates and our addiction rates, and then add into that the lack of services, yes, we're gonna send more people to the penitentiary.
Yeah, that, that bill we reported is horrible for us.
It's just ridiculous.
I sent a very long email to both our representatives, hopeful, and the Association of Counties, the sheriffs, everybody's been down there working hard against it. Hopefully they can kill it. See, the DOCRs is really short-sighted in a lot of different ways. And that one in particular is, is a short-sighted thing. When they look at Ramsey County, they just say, well, population-wise, they send too many down. Well, we, we put people on probation, we try community-based services. When people quit treatment, walk away, abscond from probation, they're gone for two or three years, we really only have one option for these people, and that's prison. Now, the only other thing that the Department of Corrections is doing, they're just ignoring it. Well, they're out there ruining the lives of their family members when they're all absconding. So it's very short-sighted on the part of the Department of Corrections. And they, on one hand, will say, you need to do everything in the community, but the flip side of the coin is the state's doing nothing to provide services in the community. So they wanna say, we're gonna empty the prisons and we're not gonna add any more prison space. Counties, it's your problem, and as you can see from the jail bell, yes, it is our problem. But the flip side is they're not providing services in the community to keep them from going to prison.
Right, and the, the prison to pipeline, um, pipeline to prison from our school system is, it's there. I mean, we have the biggest, you know, we expel kids, but we don't have one single place for a child, um, fourteen to eighteen to go to treatment in the community, stay in their school. The answer for the school, because they're at the end of what they can do, is to expel to get services, which is wrong, so anyway.
Um, where is our nearest assessment district, I mean, facility, Grand Forks?
Probably Grand Forks.
Minna?
Minna.
Jameson?
Well, that's a state hospital and you have to have exhausted any other place that they can go, which is an email from me begging, sorry. Um, Alex White, Dr. Alex White, sir, we don't have any other place for this kid, can you take him? That's where that's at, and he has been very kind to let us use it, even if they're over, that's for kids that are, um, what's the word, forensic, like homicidal and.
Yeah.
So it's really not a good place for our kids to go unless they aren't fit into that category, but.
How much traction, you think that thirteen fifty to get, what do you feel?
Uh, fifty-fifty shot.
Throw it into a study?
I hope not, because they've already studied it, that was the Schulte study.
They have studied it.
They have studied, there's a need, except we're passed over because it wouldn't be politically correct for me to tell you why we're passed over, but we're passed over because I don't think that we've ever historically in this region made a lot of noise. We have two reservations, we have Spirit Lake, Turtle Mountain, our needs are tremendous in this region. And we just haven't been looked at, we don't make a, we just don't make a lot of noise, because we don't have the numbers. But you look at per capita with our population and the kids we have in foster care and the disproportionality according to race, it's huge, huge. We have more kids in care and, and juvenile issues with drugs and alcohol, alcohol per capita, and I can send you Patty's, um, Rimey's um, testimony, than comparing ourselves to Fargo. I mean, we don't have the numbers, but if you look at what our population is, it's close.
How many bed facility would this be, did you say, Rhonda?
Well, three to eight, anywhere from three to eight, I'm guessing it's gonna be on the lower side, because of the money, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars doesn't mean too a lot, so.
Where's our closest inpatient treatment for addiction? Where do you have to think of that?
Grand Forks is ninety miles, is that closer than Minna, I guess I, yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, Minna's a hundred and twenty.
Grand Forks is a.
Grand Forks, that's, that's adult or juvenile?
Both.
Both, so they have facilities for both.
Wasn't that one in Canoe gonna open though?
Their, Hartview Foundation is shooting for um, June of twenty sixteen, so that's a ways off.
I think that might happen a little bit earlier now, Rhonda, because the North Central Platinum Council is revising the mortgage on that one.
Okay, good. The, the problem with, that happened with Center for Solutions is our Medicaid system, our state Medicaid system, because of the way it's set up by our legislators, we do not pay inpatient, um, we, we do not pay inpatient um, treatment for adolescents by way of Medicaid. And the truth be told, because of how the Affordable Care Act rolled out and how Blue Cross and Blue Shield responded to that, um, we're probably gonna find ourselves in a lawsuit, because me with my insurance and your insurance, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we would have a difficult time getting Blue Cross and Blue Shield right now to pay for our adolescent to go into inpatient treatment. You'd have to fight tooth and nail, do a lot of meetings, it just is not happening, there's a disparity, it's um, it's not on par with federal regulations, there's, it's not a hundred percent parity. Um, and I'd have to read about it some more, but there's issues that the legislature's looking at to, to address that. But when we set our Medicaid expansion standard so low to barely meet the minimum, well, we didn't meet the minimum, Blue Cross then needed to be competitive, so they lowered what they would pay, so it's a huge issue now. So until that is fixed, I think, well, Hartview has a large um, foundation that pays and there are people that go, can go there for free. You know, they have a um, nonprofit that's huge as far as money, they've been lucky enough to really secure a lot of private funding. So they may be able to go along for a while, but you really need a billing source if you're gonna house.
You need insurance.
Twelve juveniles.
Boy, that's the biggest problem in Canoe in the first place, I mean, it is.
Right, so I'm talking too much.
Well, if you're getting all these individuals that probably don't have the finances to start with, and you have no way to bill them, or no way to, for cash flow, you can do these literally, and then you.
Jerry, can you copy it this morning, Jerry thinks, I hope you get some, I'm just hyped up like this naturally, so. Um, anyway.
Anything else?
No, thank you, sorry, it took a lot of time.
The sheriff, the sheriff representative on the Association of Counties Board Directors is also as passionate as you are about, about that bill not being able to come into effect, so I think there's a big push by the association to down that bill.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. It's kinda interesting that the Department of Corrections can drive that. It's also, if you look at it in certain ways, it's actually, yeah, kinda scary, because that would drive what judges do and how judges sentence that, and how states attorneys recommend sentencing, which is really scary.
If we're gonna look at any good aspect of having to go up to our current rate of incarceration fees and stuff like that, if they looked at our past rate, it didn't look like compared to the rest of the state that we had a problem. But it's gonna double now and it's gonna look like we have a problem. It's gonna be a little bit more convincing to them that, you know, what, what the problem is out here. Your testimony, I hope more. Anything else? Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you for listening.
While you're still on legislation, Mr. Chairman, tonight, that, that House Bill ten fifty-four that I talked about, that passed in the House last Thursday. It must not have been on the right website or something, because, so, and the only reason I'm telling you is so if you're gonna talk to somebody, it's gonna have to be at the crossroads of the Senate, I can take care of it, but.
That's the tree one?
Yep, yep, and the WRP.
Okay.
Pass it all.
It passed House last Thursday.
Hey, that WRP, is, what's the bill read again?
Ten fifty.
Is it taxed every year?
Well, that's the, the way, the way that you get it into the non-productive category, no matter if it's water or. It has to be, previous year's income has to be right, like below fifty percent of the non-craft average, that's only, it's about ten bucks an acre or something.
So they're taking all the money one year, two years down the road, they're.
Back into the tax break, where if you got it in CRC or Water Bank or somewhere, it's an annual payment, you get disqualified every year. So what's on the Senate side, I don't know, so if you're gonna contact somebody.
I guess they did build it, would allow them to have a session every year now, so. Um, that's part of the problem is that they don't review this stuff about every other year and, and these kind of things come up and they don't understand, they've got too much to read.
Well, Jerry, we'll have to get that into, uh, meeting with the legislators when we do it, probably at Crossover, we'll probably have a meeting. And if you get those bills presented then, you know, get our feeling behind them. Like you said, WRP is probably, Ramsey County or in this area, probably got more WRP than anywhere else in the state, that'd be, that'd be my guess, so.
And I don't know how you guys feel about, I don't, you know, when you put it in WRP, you get the eight hundred bucks an acre or whatever it is. Do you think you should pay property taxes until the next thirty years?
We can, I was gonna talk about inundated land here on the end and portfolios, but when I was there Thursday, uh, State Water Commission just threw the ranch and that whole thing right away. I mean, at the end of the political presentations, basically, they own the land under the water.
I don't know if you've seen the bill that, I don't remember his name, but he was from Allo, Marvin somebody?
Nelson.
Marvin Nelson?
Haven't seen it ever, but.
Well, I guess he kinda threw me under the bus. He told me I shouldn't, don't need to come testify, but he, he really made a point at the hearing to let them know that we're still taxing the land under the lake. And I, in.
Which we're gonna continue doing.
Well, but what he's saying and what he was trying to get across is the state owns it, why are we taxing it if the state owns it?
Oh, that was the question brought up in hearing also, you know, why are they paying taxes? Wow, when you get down there, I'm sure everybody's seen this, when you go to Biz Market talking about Devil's Lake issues. I mean, Christ, you, you're the elephant in the crowd, there's no doubt about it, you know, and um, it, it just goes over their head. They don't wanna listen very.
When I called him, when I called him, his issue was more on, it seemed to me was something about putting docks in.
I don't, I don't know.
So, and he told me that if this bill even had a chance of going anywhere, he'd kill it himself, and it was his bill.
Yeah, oh, wait, wait numbered, you don't know?
I don't, not off the top of my head.
It's not the inundated one, so.
No, it's, it's on taxation of the land under the lake. It's on sovereign land is what he, I, I also have communication.
Well, that's what the state called it.
Uh-huh.
The state called it in both testimonies, both ten in the House, they called it sovereign land. As long as water's not it, they got it, they call it water land.
You know what?
It goes down three feet, then it goes back to the landlord, unless he sold it. You know, and that's.
The state land department put in thirty-three million dollar fiscal note to handle it, because they were supposed to give the tax director a survey every four years. And like I called, it's, we don't need a survey, we've got light, or we can do that without a survey every four years, we do it every year.
They put thirty-three million and a half?
A fiscal note attached to that bill for thirty-three million if they have to survey it every four years.
The lake?
Yes, the lake shore, so we could take land off the tax rules and put it back on and so.
I didn't wanna ask, who put it in the data bills for twenty-five million?
I would be happy with that deal.
Steve is saying that any water, specifically Devil's Lake, and it's, it's, the water under the lake is, or the land under the lake is the state's property. So are they claiming that on every slough out in the middle of nowhere?
It's, it's just navigable.
Well, we're still paying taxes on that, right?
It's navigable water.
So if it's navigable, if it's navigable water, shouldn't any, any slough that you can put a boat on be under the ta, under the tax rules every?
I've been through that.
I heard on the radio last morning.
With hunters putting a duck boat on, out on, they'll go right off the township road into the water. You're, they're toodling around out there on their duck boats shooting ducks, you got the farmer on his land right on the shoreline, try to kick him off. There's an attorney general's opinion that that is navigable waters, and the farmer cannot kick him off.
And that's how I've always understood it too, well, then if that state waters that state land underneath, why am I paying taxes on it?
Let's not go there.
I know, but I'm just, I'm claiming that was that.
It would be, we couldn't handle it.
Well, here it looked like, to me, they were gonna have so much.
You'd have to be, look at everything.
Everything that's completely under would be easy, but the stuff that wasn't, we'd have to split those parcels and put half of it in the state's name and half of it in the, the owner's name. And the next year when the level fluctuates, I change it.
It'd be, it'd be virtually impossible.
Yeah, we couldn't do it.
I don't know, everybody understands, I don't know, it's a place to bring it up, might as well, but we're at fifty-one. You know, and they're not gonna buy any land until it gets down to forty-six on this end, the east end, and forty-five on that end. So there's six feet there that nobody's buying any land.
That's what Representative Hofstadter's bill was?
Yes.
It was, there was no buyout until forty-six?
Forty-six on that end, forty-five on that end.
Okay.
And there's hardly anything, Jeff, for us that, north of Highway two between Devil's Lake and Church's Ferry, there's only like one or two acres. So none of that would be.
So you're everything south of two, you've got a chance to get your.
Biggest shirt is in the flats, you know, like Stumble Lake. But like I said, you listen to the testimony that was for it, went on pretty good, and then a lawyer from the state water commission got up against it. You know, it was not anywhere, we might get it in a study, that's what's gonna happen.
And the, and the issue of not being able to pay individuals.
That's it.
There's a, there's a big issue in there too, so.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, that's gonna kill it for now.
They're gonna, they gotta change constitution to get that done, so.
Yeah, that's how I've always kinda understood it, is constitution, you change where you want to pay people.
But I did hear this morning, now that they have killed the waters of the state bill, or half of it, not all of it, but half of it, and the part pertaining to the MRCS having to be a policing agency on that, so.
They didn't fund it, oh, they got the funding to do it all, so.
Yeah.
They're just sitting there with their, boiling their thumb, they don't.
Yeah, it's.
But to go back to your eight hundred dollars an acre, you're.
Yeah. I was wondering if they weigh on those things.
There's an individual south of Minnewacan, it's all put it in the WRP. And he's probably got five acres left out of two thousand or whatever, and uh, it's out of water, and that's a building site. And his road, he can get, they built that up, township built that up, the rock dude, whatever they did. And uh, but he took the WRP pay, he had it all, and it's all pasture farmland, and you know, that's it. And he's eighty-six years old, so it's pretty well underwater, and that's gonna be what he gets. And he hasn't had any income off of it for twenty-two years, you know. So there's a lot of stories out there like that, I know a lot of individuals around the lake. This happened to them, and they're sitting there looking at, well, there's my retirement, you know, and, I mean, that's pretty sad, you know. The one person I thought that would be there from Ramsey County, when I found out later, was in Arizona with Garland Hoistad. Have you ever been to the DLEC meetings downstairs? I mean, he brought the basement right to its feet, twice, I see, and it was just as quiet in there, you could hear a pin drop. And the governor was really quiet, and the governor talked to Garland afterwards. But he, I was wishing he would've been, I was really kinda counting on him, because, I mean, he, he can get on him pretty good, you know, really instant, all of it. That's where the eight hundred dollars comes from, you know, the WRP pay, and that's what they're using here too, so.
Yeah, well, we, we've had requests, you know, some, we've had two instances that I know of that, that, I mean, you put it in WRP, collect the money and then sell it to somebody else. And the next guy comes in for the tax break, because he didn't get any income off it, you know, so there's different stories too.
Yeah.
You know, it's not the guy that got the money that wants the tax break, it's the guy that bought it after. You know, and that stuff that's under the lake now, if it's in WRP, and we don't, I don't go searching for WRP contracts, I don't have time to do that, but we, that's lower just like anything else is right now.
Yeah.
We just draw that line and we have it at fifty-three point five now, everything below that, no matter what it's in, has got the tax break.
When they're limited on how much water could be on it, wouldn't it, couldn't be more than eight feet of water?
Six feet, because that's as far as a duck can dive or something.
And, and then in David Lake Shore, that's about twenty-five six acres, or does it even go down since?
It's rough, well, it fluctuates with these twelve percent and stuff, but it, you know what I say, it's twenty-five to thirty bucks per quarter, is what we're taxing it.
Yeah, on that WRP.
On anything that's below the lake level.
Oh, twenty-five to thirty a quarter?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else there?
Well, what, what's the? Well, what, what's the, I just was looking at the agenda, the, there's an abatement on some public property.
It's the city's, it's a nonprofit, it was a hope center.
Oh, I just seen that on there, I thought, oh, I'm gonna hear it, this will talk, we'll head up a little bit in, okay, thanks.
Kevin, how are you?
Okay, Tony, Tony Nordine stopped in, wants to put an approach in on Ramsey County two, east of town, in Minnewacan Township. On the half mile, I have section thirty-six on the north side. And I stopped there and looked at it, and it looks like it's probably a place where they do need an, an approach. Uh, he's got some land, land that's gonna be unlocked there, and we'll need to put a culvert in and everything, but I guess I would recommend approval on that approach.
There's one of those, I'll say, somewhat of a, you know, approach, huh?
There's, there's quite a few approaches in that area, but the amount of time that he's gonna spend on that approach is maybe reasonable, so. Uh, I looked at it too, and I think he needs one after, that's.
He said what bill?
I, I think he needs one there, I, I'll make a motion to him on that.
Who pays for the culvert?
He, he has, all the work, he pays for all of that, he has to meet the slopes there in two seconds.
Do I make a motion in a second on that? All favors say aye.
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 And I would say, oh, they contacted me about this quite a while back, but they wanna put poles on the in slope. On Ramsey County two, out by Gary Hollis, Bob Roman, Mike Eimer, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, we did a great raise there, but. Earlier I told them it wasn't gonna be possible, but now they have a draft plan that, and they want me to bring it before the commission, they're proposing to put. The poles right on the edge of the rip, wrap them in some wire anchors, would be within ten feet of the edge of the pavement. I've already told them no, but I thought I would bring it to the commission to see what you guys think, and if anything, we maybe could allow them to bury a line there, but. I would not suggest letting them.
Ten feet from the pavement?
That's where the guide wires come down, yeah.
They can't get on the backside of the ditch?
No, 'cause the pressure's going the other way.
I'm gonna look at that one too, and I agree with Kevin, that's, that's way too dangerous, they got this, they got this cross out, stake, stakes. Where they wanna put their poles and where they wanna put their wires, and we're just avoiding the whole one.
The guides are gonna have, the guide wire has to come closer to the pavement, ten feet?
Almost.
Right at ten feet.
Ten feet, looks like.
The guide wire.
Yes, the guide wire.
It'll be like twenty feet out or something, you know.
Where are the poles now again?
Out in the water.
They're in the water, yeah.
There's, they're upright though, yeah, evidently.
Yeah, it could go around the slough to the south too, I mean, it's not that far, it's.
They, they don't think they can bury?
It's a, it's a, it's a high energy, high watered line, so they didn't wanna bury it, but anything's possible.
Oh, are they gonna put a south of the road then?
On the south side of the road.
South or?
On the south side.
It's south of the road right now, right, right to the middle, yeah, right to the middle of the water there.
Right where the.
That's, that's, that's the order to the line.
South side.
Okay.
And you know, I'm sure you're familiar with that slough, it's not that big to go around the south, so.
So, they just wanna take the poles out of the water, they're basically.
Right, yeah.
They could put poles around in the south, right?
They could.
They don't need to bury it out there.
Well, that's the thing, they can put them south, the, that slough in the south isn't that big, they can put them on the south side of the road instead of the north side.
Asking them, since they don't wanna have to pay for them.
Maybe a little more inconvenient for them, but that, that's life.
Yeah, it just seems to me they could go and bury it too, I mean.
Yeah, I think. As far as our right away is concerned, I think if we're considering allowing it, we should, at the very minimum, make them bury it. Yeah.
Mark, where are you at?
No, I don't think they should put it that close to the road either. I was thinking the same thing, Lonnie, but they just don't wanna go through a half foot and pay it.
Well, that's gotta be a treacherous stretch of roads, it's, every time, too, you get ice and you got guidelines right up to the road, hold it, 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 it can spill some disaster, it's a one of them.
They mesmerize you, you know, you just.
Are they having trouble with the poles, Kevin?
Uh, they're standing there today, but that's what they say, they're worried about them breaking off or.
One of them started to.
And it is a high powered line, so I suppose that's.
A lot of their concern by, there's only ways to do it.
Well, they're gonna, I don't know, if they put in a different kind of a structure on both sides of it, they wouldn't be able to stand it, so.
Right, it is a lot.
So, I mean, they, they, they have other options.
So, minimum, I don't know what you're thinking, but at the minimum, should have a motion saying that if they wanna use our right away, they have to bury the line. I don't know if I'll think about it more, or go look at it, or whatever, I don't think they're finally doing the work till spring or summer.
This, this year.
I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion to the table, and if they, if they run square and they look, that's, that's table for the next meeting.
And you get back to him, Kevin, and, um, commissioner, if you're not in favor of putting poles that close to the road.
See if they have any other options.
See if they'll come up with another option.
See if they'll come up with another option. Yeah, voluntarily, you know.
Okay, motion to the table?
I got a motion to the table, which I'm excited, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
And the last one is, we need to put rakes and drums on, since I wrote this up, there's two gravel trailers on. And the estimate is about seventeen hundred dollars each, for each trailer, they're triple axles, so, a lot of drums.
Me, that's over a thousand bucks, so I'll make a motion, uh, while we put those.
We're gonna second.
We're gonna, we're gonna motion in a second, we're gonna do that ourselves?
Yes.
This is just the purchase of birds.
Do you know an estimate of what it costs?
Seventeen hundred each, so.
Yeah, we need to call.
We'll call.
Licon? Coulson?
Aye.
Burton's?
Aye.
From? Heisler? Heisler?
I'm Martin, so. Can I push the alarm button?
Nope, she's, I think she's still on.
Hey, anything else, Kevin?
That's all I have.
Water board, or should we go down to new business?
Take care of our new business. Maybe we wanna just let them know that we're ready, so we. Put a letter to transfer.
Basically, the letter of transfer is. Half of the budget for emergency managers is out of the road, and the city is the other half. Um, the next one is.
My daughter's dancing there, and I have to go to Fargo and.
As we get the bill.
I don't know, ten thirty, she's supposed to get in with all the.
The next one is.
Storms, everything's canceled. I'm a worldwide traveler, coming from Sweden, so.
Twenty years, stay out of your basket every year. What we're gonna do with that fund, and we recommended a couple years ago, was to transfer it to the general, so that's the one that's about.
Some of them made them back.
I don't know where that came from.
Yeah, it stormed last week, so they're just catching up, and they're canceling and rerouting and. So, it was never spent out. We did lose. Are you?
That's all you gotta do to it, because all you gotta do is know.
Just, just.
Sorry, Myrna. Okay, okay.
We have different funds that, you know, structures that we tax, and that the money has to go into, and then we have to move that money out of those funds subsequently to the public social services.
It's.
Because there's not, we have to tax them for several structures, we have to properly tax them.
For social, yeah, for social services, we levy twenty pounds of the county public services, and the rest comes out of emergency four, which is probably one, four, three this year. So we levy thirty-two point four three, so whatever they budget out of the two-two-one-zero, which is social services, and two-two-one-two is social service projects. We transfer, when she gives me a bill every month, we transfer eighty-seven percent. But we take that bill and we subtract the county public services, which is spad cost care and a lot off of there, because we pay that out of the twenty pound fund. So.
Okay.
And I can show you the report to explain a little better, and then for Kristen's budget, which is the emergency management budget.
Yeah.
The state pays fifty percent, the county pays fifty percent, and it comes out of the generals.
So we don't have a specific mill levy for emergency.
Correct, and the sufficient wildlife funding, that was never a levy, that just came in from the state, like I said, twenty seven years ago. That got put into a fund, and it's been sitting in a sense, and.
Tax rate.
Yeah, they recommend if it's not being used, to transfer it to the general, so.
Do we have to notify them that we're doing that?
No, they don't even know what it's about, I contacted them five years ago on.
If, if they're not aware.
They have no regulation, why it's. It goes into the general fund.
Any other questions? All favors say aye.
Oh, was there a motion?
I don't know, we have a motion.
All, all in.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second, do you have a motion or a second? All favors say aye.
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 Water board?
I say.
Okay, I don't really know that we've got anything, we're actually gonna meet with the, the people on the lot in Cooley as far as the bridge on, on number eight there in, in just a few minutes, so we haven't got that done yet. Uh, really, we haven't, uh, got anything for you at this point, unless you've got some question for us.
Just a question I have, it's the county, and you've got that, the plan for that, or?
Well, we, we're gonna meet with them in, in about five minutes, so. I, I've, the, what we've always done is, is we, we would recommend to the county that they put in something that will meet the stream crossing standards. Now, my understanding of the stream crossing standards, they don't really look at depth very much, it's basically just the width, that, you know, to allow the water to go through there without going over the road. So I don't know that that would alleviate their problem, because it probably meets the stream crossing standards right now, although it is higher than what the landowners around there would like. So.
Well, they do, they do, they, they, they do a size of the watershed, don't they, Paul, so?
Yeah, that's.
So, I mean, if the water, you know, like the one up north, the watershed was ten thousand acres, it's a thousand, so they.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's a chance that maybe the watershed changed.
Although, the, the fact that we've never had a problem with it going over the road in that situation, that to me says it must meet the stream crossing standards.
But they, they think it's too high.
They think it's too high, and I, I can see.
That's the drift I got.
You know, yeah, I was there and looked at it, and it, it looks like it maybe is a little bit too, too high, but.
You did look at it.
I did look at, I, I think I was the only one that looked at it, but it, when the, the water, and I'm not sure if it's in their level, you know, it's, it's a box culvert. When it came out of that box culvert, there was about an eighteen inch drop to where, to where the water level was on the other side, so obviously. It is lower there, it's been cleaned out since the box culvert was put in, so. Who knows if, if it got cleaned too far, or, you know, where, if the box culvert was put in too high, you know, it. But it would be an expensive fix to, to do something there.
Well, it'd be the low flow, right?
Yeah, it's just a.
So you could bore a small culvert in it.
Right.
But if you did that, the width, by the time you went around the, the side.
You'd have to do some digging, though.
Yeah, you would.
You'd have, you'd have to open up the ditch a little bit so you could flow into that culvert for the overflow.
Yeah, or for the, the low, low flows, the, the high flows, it's fine, and, and the stream crossing standard kinda works with high flows, but, you know, they aren't really concerned about the low flows, so. I suspect what they're gonna say is it's, it's good enough.
What was that box culvert put in along the?
Was it the sixties ice floes? Didn't they say it's a missile base? No, that one, the one on four was like, oh, okay, thirty or forty years.
And it wouldn't be the first time a culvert was put in, and it was.
Well, I don't think it was too high, I think they dug the Cooley out.
Well, I think they did some maintenance on the Cooley afterwards.
I mean, you go look, it's kinda obvious.
So you, you kinda think, oh, that's the way you're gonna recommend it to the group of landowners from that area?
Well, I know our recommendation to the county is that they put in a structure that'll meet the stream crossing standards, that's what we always do.
So you're gonna leave it up to the county then to go ahead and?
To find out what the stream crossing standards are.
Well, I mean, what they need, like you say, is this small culvert, like twenty-four inch culvert, does that do it?
Low flow, you know, it's. Yeah, we're not talking a lot of water, so. But I, you know, I don't know if it's real flat, but you know, you back it up a foot, you bet, or if you're holding it a foot, a foot and a half, and it's backing up. I don't know how flat it is up there.
Other, other than Paul, are you, is there anyone that's looked at it on the origin?
Yeah, I think I am the only one that was up there.
I haven't looked at it.
But actually, we farmed with an half mile of it, and if it, if there was one in lower, it would help us, but I, I don't think we should be, you know.
Well, they're pretty concerned, I've got quite a turnout today, I would have.
I, yeah, we've got three or four there anyways, so.
It looks, it looks like through the freeze thaw cycles, it has shifted down that south, north section.
On the box.
On the floor.
On the floor.
Floor.
You got some ease in there now?
Well, the whole section of culvert itself, you know, it's not, it didn't crack and break, but it looks like through the freeze thaw, it may have lifted it a little bit. And that's why it's falling off so bad on the south, south side. Not a great deal, maybe six inches at the most.
Who determines the stream crossing standard?
State engineer or?
Well, an engineer, not necessarily the state engineer.
So at some point, there wasn't crossing standard done on that, I was.
Yes.
I'm sure it was.
But the county, the county's stream crossing standard is different than the township, and they're all different.
Wow.
State's different.
Which is a set number essentially.
Yeah, it's like a twenty-five year event, or a fifty year event, fifteen year event for the township.
Are we looking at a large decrease here, Paul, or, you know, would you guess, would you guess?
I wouldn't think, you know, because, you know, it is a defined, it's Cooley, you know, so it's a defined channel in there, so. If you do hold it a foot higher, granted, it slows it, I think their question is it slows everything down, and it does, I'll, I'll agree that it does. But I can't see where it really affects a whole lot of farmland.
It's still within the stream, it's south.
It's still within the banks of the Cooley.
Right.
So like I said, it'll slow it down from further up, but.
Further up, yeah.
Wow. More than, more than actually move that much more water, would just speed up what actually does come, I think.
Steve, we don't have any overhead maps, we can look at that area, do we, do we tell us the age?
But the watershed, the watershed's all.
I don't know, but I would tell you.
Yeah, there's probably an elevation down there, so.
There isn't any elevation, but you could see an aerial portal, yeah. From lot and go, go over by Kato Township.
West, yeah.
Just blow it up some more, I wonder if, is that number eight down on the, the south there?
South here, I believe.
I think we have to go a little more south. Yeah, there's the Cooley right there.
Very, there's a, right there.
Yeah.
So can you tell me where township is six and you're in?
I believe it's twenty-six.
Yeah, we'd be calling six, it would be on the north side.
Twenty-six of Kato.
Section twenty-six?
Okay, cool. Both are there solid, and let's see that Cooley.
So that's the.
That's the box culvert?
The box culvert's right there, yeah.
Yeah, that looks really defined.
It's like a pretty defined channel.
It is.
It is.
You know, it.
So where, where is it backing out?
Oh, it backs up to the north, you know, if, if the culvert is too high, it would hold an extra foot of water, or possibly two feet of water.
To the north or to the south?
To the north.
The water's coming south.
Water's going south, yeah.
Okay.
I don't exactly know.
So some of those laterals coming in, it could be checked in those?
Possibly, you know, but like, I say, a half mile.
Slows it down, it's, it's getting out, but it's going down.
The, the stuff that's kind of coming into the center of the, we farm that, and, and, yeah, I'd like the water, but, but I don't think the culvert is a problem. Yeah, it would help us, but, like I said, it's in the, it's in the channel. You know, and high flows, it isn't gonna change anything, and that's where you've got problems, is in the high flows. And the low flows, yeah, it, it probably slows things down a little bit, but. We actually, that's the spot, if you can see where the slough is on the south side there, where we had a permit to put in a. there, where we had a permit to put in a big pipe there, we put a pipe, that's where our pipe put in for our drainage project there, and that, we put in a 24-inch pipe there, and I think it cost better than $30,000, that was $32,000 or $33,000. And I guess I can't see why you'd wanna do that, and then, then the other work that you'd have to do to widen that Cooley, and the maintenance that would be required, to me, it probably isn't feasible.
Jesus. I thought it was closer to lot. I thought it was going like four or five miles above the lot. Honestly, this is what they're talking about.
This is what they're talking about. And they say it backs up water, well, you know, we're not quite to number four there. Number four is just...
Yeah, it backs it up a little.
Yeah. There's number four there.
There's right there.
Is that Elder Gross's there now?
Yeah, that'd be Elder Gross's on the south there. But they claim it backs up water all the way there, and I don't think it backs it up that far. It slows it down, yeah, I'll agree there, it slows it down. And we did clean out the, that stretch of the Cooley last fall. A group of landowners got together and cleaned out between number eight and number four. I think they even went, went a couple miles further on, east of number four.
So we don't know if that's gonna help yet or not?
Well, it'll help some, but it, like I said, it's a defined channel, yeah, if it holds two feet of water, if it holds two inches, to me, it isn't the end of the world. I don't wanna spend $100,000 for it.
Well, they think that, just in a pool of...
Will come a little faster. I'm sure that's what it is, you know, and it will, but at what point do you say it's good enough?
Well, I think we talked about this before. It's not gonna, it's not gonna affect anybody to the south, correct? No matter what you do, gonna be the same? Nobody's gonna lose any, get, have any, even temporarily flooded land if you add to the speed of the flow?
If you just go with a 24-inch culvert, then yes, you're right, it won't bother them, but if you put in a great big box culvert there, then yes, those people will be greatly affected.
Well, we better consider that.
So there's already a box culvert there, right?
Right, and it checks the water. There's been a six-foot head there, so, you know, think about that, and if you put a bigger box culvert in there, and that whole six-foot head goes through there...
You're gonna mull that water if you're pretty fucking high flow.
We're not going with a bigger box.
Yeah, a bigger box culvert, well, you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars there.
Probably half a million.
Or half a million dollars, yeah. If it's just low flows, it actually shouldn't affect anything downstream, if something like a two-foot culvert. But to me, the benefit of the two-foot culvert doesn't...
Will it be able to handle the high flows of 24, or will it be eroded? Will it be damaged or load?
Good question. I suppose you'd have to rip wrap it, you know?
Because that, there'd be a lot of suction going through there when it's in high flow.
Could put a gate on. Open a gate after. That's sure not gonna cost much.
But the dyke or the ditching process to get either way from the culvert, that's gonna cost, if they didn't have highway later, I'm sure there's gotta be some standards in that.
And even the maintenance to keep that cleared is gonna be a problem, I would think.
Be a dirty deal there.
I would think it would be.
The benefits aren't really that great. I mean, you know, let's just stay on the foot and a half of water, they're trying to get through the cap. Well, if you go north upstream, how, at what level is that foot and a half of land getting that high? And that's how much would benefit? You know? So how far is that?
Coming forward.
I guess we'll hold that up.
Actually gets dry sometimes when it's a beast, I believe.
I don't know.
Well, Steve, what their ideas is?
But it stays with it.
Here we go.
Not after the stream is streaming.
Thank you, guys.
Paul, can you share your ideas on this, or any of the landlord negotiations and stuff?
Oh, sure. I guess we did, two of us went down, Jim and I went down, and we testified on the inundated land, the 1400, 2267, I believe, was the Senate bill, and there really, other than the legislators that had proposed the legislation, nobody else spoke in favor of it. Against it, actually, Jeff, he came as a joint board and was kind of neutral, and did some testimony, basically gave numbers, so they had some stuff to work with. I testified against it, and John Patauska from the regulation part of the State Water Commission testified against it, and basically, he told them that the state already owns the land, you can't buy something you already own. So, to me, I don't think it's going to go anywhere. The, we did kinda discuss some stuff. We talked a little bit about other options. The waterboard felt that this isn't the right option, and what we would like to see is an annual payment deal, maybe based on what the WRP kind of worked at, because what this, the one that's there right now works at, is something that's got more than six and a half feet of water on, which didn't qualify for the WRP. A lot of the stuff is kind of the same, and we said, you know, figure out an annual payment type deal on that, and the reason the WRP was allowed to work, even though the state claims ownership of the land, was because there was a memorandum of agreement between the state and the federal government allowing this payment to occur, and it didn't sound like they would do that for the sale of the land, but I would think that you would have some negotiating room to do that on an annual type payment. Now, I don't think the votes are there to get an annual payment, but, you know, it is something, we did tell them that this is more what we would want. I guess I basically told them, if there are some landowners that would like to sell it, I'd hate to be in, stand in their way, and not allow them to it, but I don't think this is the right vehicle to use. It's all tied to the federal legislation, so you aren't gonna change anything there, but I don't see it going anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, without going to Homestead credits?
Almost approved.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the Homestead credits, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in. Motion carry. Prove a raffle for that.
What was the raffle?
Prove the raffle.
Oh, well, that was, that was on me.
Any questions?
Did you second it, Murna?
Sure.
Okay.
We had a motion?
Yes.
And a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in. Motion carry. Do the payment, or do an album?
Yes, that's from the City of Devil's Lake, it's on the Hope Center, I put a copy on your desk. It's, they taxed them for 12 months, and they should only have taxed them, the person that owned it, before the Hope, before the Hope Center, so they get a five-month rebate.
Just a pro, aye?
Yes, it's a duration, because they're a nonprofit, and I've got all the nonprofit documentation from the city, so...
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the payment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in. Motion carry. Portfolios, any reports? Bill?
Can I bring something for Bill?
Well, Steve wanted to pick that up.
Yes, we've been, Steve's been talking about how to change the parcel viewer to make it more friend, user-friendly, plus, he wants to know, and as far as I'm concerned, it's okay, to put the true and full value, the taxable value. He has some slides prepared, correct?
Well...
He can show you, or?
The new parcel viewer.
And he wants the board's opinion on...
Well, is this the element that like the banks or someone wants, so that they don't have to come up and go to the tax office all the time to get taxable value?
That's correct. So they kinda have an estimate on the true and full?
Thanks, all in favor.
Well, you said a lot of the findings are already doing this, right?
There is 22 out of the 53.
Are doing it now?
Yes.
And the true and full value and the taxable public information anyway, public record, when they come up here, they ask where they can get it.
Right.
But most of the time, they call us, and then we end up faxing it to them, or standing and emailing it, or, I mean, so...
So, yeah, basically, the only new additions, so, true and full and tax on here that wasn't done before, and the milts also. Oh, that's a good deal.
Yeah, I guess I will run on to the last thing, right? It didn't seem real user-friendly, and, I don't know, I like the interface on it, and it's nice, just a matter of if you wanna put those values on there.
It doesn't ask for how user anything like that, so a person can't scrutinize the, uh, outline of the house, or anything like that, so, it's just basic information. Basically, helping out the real estate company, correct?
Basically, yeah, the bankers and the state.
The bankers.
So, I'll hold your word vote a little bit, because you're taking calls on it, I'll listen.
At least it takes a lot of calls.
Yeah, I usually, I usually have a telephone.
Jerry gets a few calls, but Lisa gets a lot.
Lisa gets most of my work, because I just, they don't need to make a motion to me.
Well, it would be nice and have it on the books, so Steve can move forward with getting it all set up, and...
It's already set up.
Set up, just a matter of releasing it to the public, basically?
Yeah, it's more work to take it off.
And I think...
It's ready. You got one down.
Okay.
So we got a...
Motion and a second?
Yes, yeah.
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All in. Motion carry. Portfolio, Bill? Close yourself a little bit?
That was it.
Okay. Airport, well, very soon, we're setting records on how many people are moving in and out here. It's just working out really well for us out there, and we're gonna be expanding our parking lot, and just continuing to offer free parking up there, so that seems to be a good draw. Like I said earlier, North Central Planning Council did raise our portion of the mortgage with, what we did have them sign a piece of paper saying that if they ever start making money, that they have to start repaying that loan, and they, when they did that, they did a buildup on another AGC, also, I think they, or somebody, so... But that, what that did is that allowed them to work with the County Medical Center and Heart View, to be able to get that center's solution building, going on what they need to do with it. And, who's doing that? They're working with the County Medical Center, and I think it's Heart View, so it's gonna be a nonprofit.
Where's, where's Heart View at?
They're huge, they're huge, like Rob just said, they're just a huge corporation, and they're a bank or something like that, but it's a nonprofit. Um, I'm not sure, I think they built, but, but not that they can't do that, but I'm not sure about that.
How big is the loan that the planning council has up there?
Um, that was several hundred thousand dollars. And you, as you know, you know, the North Central Planning Council is in the business of giving loans out to read high-risk ventures to try to bring development to communities and stuff like that, so it isn't unusual for this to happen, but it just seemed to us that hospitals and stuff like that are usually for profit, and that they should be able to pay that loan back. But we needed to release that so this venture could happen, and get married up, and get going, and we did that, and we made a special meeting last week. That's it. Other than that, I don't have anything, other than I really do wanna stress that we need to get our Planning Zone Committee back together, and get going on this, and trying to get that going in touch with the mayor, and some of the members that are on that board, I don't know how it fell apart, just, it's a lack of things to do generally, but we're expanding and growing our community so fast that I think it's gonna become important for everybody to be informed and stuff like that, and know what's going on, so, more... Murna, what's back up to do? I forgot you.
I'm pretty unforgettable, come on, Ed.
Unless you say something, I forget.
As far as a former Devil's Lake, there's a private buyer who is interested in buying the Walmart, he's got some plans for...
Yeah, that was on the radio this morning?
Private and public business in there, he addressed the City Commission last night on that. We've put some money, some more money into more housing. The due diligence and citizen question report has been released on the oil refinery. The city approved a zoning and annexation permit last night, or, yeah, the zoning and annexation, and of course, that is contingent upon Eagles legislating their permits. Because it's heavy industry, there will also have to be some conditional use permitting, and that's something we should probably also talk about with, when we have a county zoning and board meeting, because those conditional use permits are very different from just heavy industry, so we need to talk about that as well. What else do I have? I think we've covered just about everything with, with social services and where we're at with the different bills there. There was a district health board meeting on Tuesday night, and there's a tobacco tax in the, in the House, and there's another one in the legislature, where the counties are more in favor of the House bill, that raises cigarette tax from 44 cents to about a dollar fifty-four. There's gonna be a lot of retail people that are gonna be against that, but the nice thing about that 1421 tobacco tax is that, I believe 40% of that money that's raised would come back to the local health units, and as we all know, our health, our local health unit is pretty poor, and it would, it would help a lot, it would also, we, you know, we would be able to hopefully write down our mills on the tax. We're at about 3.2 right now, and hopefully, we could write it down at least a mill, and have some savings there. The other bill that we're watching pretty closely is 1318, it was introduced to Brandonburg, and they, for 20 million dollars in tax funds for egg production, and they pretty much, it pretty much sounds like that would also include the oil refinery in Devil's Lake. That's what I like that.
Okay, thank you.
I talked with the recorder yesterday, she said there's not much moving on, but they're waiting to get their documents back that they scanned last camera board, I don't know what, but they should be getting those back pretty soon, and keep saving up money so they can do the next round of scanning. Treasurer, we have about 6 million of the 13 million in, in property tax payments, so we're getting around 50% done. Things are going fairly smoothly, they said, hopefully, they will be in the next couple weeks, it'll be quite busy, obviously. Um, things are going fairly smoothly. They said hopefully they will be in a couple weeks, it'll be quite busy, obviously, since, like, the fifteenth of February is the deadline to get your discount. So they said, uh, it's going smoothly though. Um, Jackie got the ten ninety-nines done for the year, and that went fairly well, easier than your stash, she said, so they were pretty happy about that. So the tax, uh, stuff can get done. Uh, went to my first chamber meeting. That was interesting. I learned all kinds of new things. Well, lake, we talked about lake access from the tourism aspect, um, uh, how they're paying, how the tourism is paying back the, uh, lodging tax that they mistakenly received that Dickinson was supposed to. They have a plan in place, and they're paying them back now, and it was high a thousand dollars a month, I believe, until that paid back. Um, and there were, uh, discussed promotion plans, uh, for Devil's Lake for this summer about getting, uh, radio in, I think it was Scott Hannon's program, and to do a promotion for the city, and, uh, the chamber was kind of spearheading that. Uh, county housing authority, uh, everything's working fairly well. Uh, HUD, they actually paid in December, so they got some money, so they're not negative in some accounts, so everything's going well there. And we approved buying, uh, some new software for how they redo their reporting back to HUD uh, in conjunction with Stutzman County to share the cost, cause we do some work with them anyway, uh, so it helps spread the cost, so that's going to improve the efficiency quite a bit. So it'll be a little bit easier on the staff, but I'll give that everything was going well.
Good. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Mark?
You know, basically, everybody's pretty quiet. I don't know if it's the winter or what, and, you know, law enforcement center is still pretty much up there in the public, uh, public side. We hired a new administrator, and I'm sure everybody knows that, so other than that, it's, it's pretty quiet. No one knows his good news.
That's good. Yeah, like Mark said, we hired a new administrator out of the law enforcement center, so. We can't come all over that, we're just a second, Mark. Come back inside. Looks very favorable, so. Anything else, Dad?
With this law enforcement bill for the business regard to twenty-five, do you want me to contact Peggy and ask her, or do you want to talk to her? Should I hold it back, or go ahead and pay it, and then they can credit us, or?
Oh, hold it back.
What, what's the difference? You want it in sixty bucks?
Yeah, it's ten dollars.
Hold it back, yeah. Hold it, I know, agreed on, I, I just don't think we agreed on that at all.
I don't recall it. I really don't. I mean, I recall discussing it, and, you know, I don't recall the specific stuff.
Cause we said we were driving up the cost of the counties more, that we already put, you know, seventy bucks on, and not doing this anymore, like a lot.
How often do we house prisoners from other counties?
Not that often, but they were whining about the paperwork for, for charging some more money then, if that's the problem.
Yeah, so.
Just hold that off. The guy you're questioning. But everything's, it seems to be going a lot better out there. Just, just a little tidbit, uh, Abby mentioned the lake access, and, uh, our lake is just getting used so much that all the lake access points, the maintenance on them has just grown to the point where the lake access committees have a hard time dealing with it. So we put in an application to the game of fish to up our rates, but in the meantime, we were falling behind. And so we came up with a corporate and individual sponsorship thing that we're going to have out there, and you can buy a little sticker for your windshield or something like that, saying I support the Lake Access Community, so Devil's in, in the area or whatever, and, and they're cheap. You can, uh, pay you the fifty dollars.
Was that the fishing tournament there?
I think they were, yeah, they had them selling at the fishing tournament. And so that's how we were going to make up our shortfall, and we didn't think that we had a real big issue doing that, it's five or six thousand dollars that we needed to come up with to balance the budget. And, and then the game of fish came back with a huge increase in maintenance fees.
I should, I should have brought that up.
With the lake access points and. That doesn't surprise me. And so.
They asked for money and they wanted increase.
They're recognizing, they're recognizing the fact that we are, our all-season, full-season year-round fish cleaning station is the only one in the state, and I'll tell you what that the new state is.
Yeah, they, they increased the payment from what, five thousand dollars for the year, or something like that, the ten thousand five hundred? So the game of fish is giving us quite a bit more money on all the access points.
Yeah, and they're.
They're, they're paying us more for the upkeep.
They're paying us more.
Oh, okay. Actually, I was going to bring that up though.
And so that's different for different ones, but that new one, if people go walk in there and they say, this is free? We can't believe this is free. Johnny Campbell comes to all our meetings, and he says, when you travel around the United States, they charge up to fifteen or twenty dollars to use.
What's that hotel on East Side? They claim they got one on the side.
They do, yeah.
Is it? I don't know, I've never been there.
And all the beach shops.
They watch them in place?
All the beach shops usually have them too.
I haven't been in that one since they.
But this is the only one that's sponsored by the community, yeah.
Yeah, and this, like I said, they, they, the pump at every, it gets used so much, they have to clean up the tanks every, if they're sixth, eighth, or seventh.
Yeah, they won't let it, yeah, they won't, they, they've got alarms on them, and the guy.
Yeah, but it's just, it gets full so quickly, it gets used so much.
They're also looking at putting out public, uh, public docks, public access points now where people can go out and basically what it is, is we're a rock lake to the general public around here. We don't have any beaches or anything like that, so. What they're doing is they're looking for several different places for them to put out big fishing gears, make a handicap accessible, so that people can just go out and fish. And basically what it is, it's designed for the kids in the community, because when they go out to the docks that are at the lake access points, they, they get told to go away, because we're trying to load, you know, your boats here, too dangerous. So the poor kids that want to fish are having a struggling time trying to figure out where they can fish, so we're trying to put three of them together. And we think we can get one together right away, but, but I'll probably be out at the end. But the other, other points are out at Six Mile Bay, or the Channel Eight, somewhere out in that area, Channel Eight would be good. And then just south of town where that old pump station used to be, the new pump station is alongside of it, but the the good, the good fishing is right where the old one used to be, because there's some hollows where the water used to dip hollow, so we want to put one there. So, okay, that's interesting. Anything else? You're done.